...best choice. It's our goal to designate these toward that project and really what it would do is allow us to construct a need improvement and to meet it within the timeframes that this funding's available. There's a shelf line on the front, so we'd like to move forward. Also, there's additional, I guess the next item is to provide additional funds for this and then to hold a approval package.
And the regional relationship is?
It's right proximity to the development. So it's right, right at the doorstep of the development.
So traffic flow from the residential area impacting that particular adjacent block?
Right. Right adjacent block. Okay.
And specific funds that are being requested. Normally you give us that packet.
We do that once a year.
Right. And I have that. Yeah, I'm sorry. And we're okay.
Yes. The specific question he's referring to are development impact fees for the public works and development impact fees for road facilities.
They were traffic mitigation impact fees that were collected on the basis of development.
Specifically in the armory or more of these?
Yes.
Are they giving out?
There's, um, yes.
So it was in the armory.
Yes.
Yeah. It originally was.
Plenipotent.
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Second. We've had some kind of minor discussion. Rule call.
Supervisor Sinjori?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye. S5O, I need to consider approving notice to contractor, special provision bid book for construction on Wildwood Road, redevelopment from the PC Canal to Barbara Ford and authorize the chairman of the sign and set May 12 at 10 a.m. to receive and open sealed bids and direct to court to publish and post notice to finish.
With the preceding action provides portion of funding, this item would also designate, actually previously designated one D fund, so residual funds that can be applied in combination with the impact fee funds and also some other transportation funds. And so with these, we would request approval of the bid packet to go forward to give actually constructive project. This amounts to about sixty-six hundred dollars and we propose a few bid alternatives based upon the funds that are currently on the pedestrian walkways, alternative to having across a lot of markets.
Okay. So this is basically a paving job and where the pedestrian PC?
Yes. We're adjacent to the road. There's a limited portion of walkway. There's one that already exists as a piece of gravel walkway and our notion is to service that.
Well, I had some concerns. Well, I had some concerns traveling when I was watching where the kids are walking and making sure that there's a very clear path because there is a fair number of kids walking back and forth from the corner all the way back down to the school. So that needs to be addressed.
So that's an option.
Plenipotent.
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Move by Marshall?
Second.
And certainly May 2012 at 10 a.m.
Second, may 2012. Any other discussion? Rule call.
Supervisor Sinjori?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. S5O, I see. Consider approving letter of agreement between county of the public works department and county of Alson County and building services department to provide county surveyor services to Alson County effective April 17, 2012, with terms and conditions set forth in the agreement of authorized chairman of the sign. And yet, so we left them high and dry.
Mr. Allison left them without surveyor, so it's a small county and I guess there's not many surveyors in the state, let alone Alson County. So what even request or their board request is approval of an agreement? Actually, they did approve of an agreement on their side. We've looked through that agreement and terms are acceptable. The general notion is to provide six months of basically bridging support just to deepen the business and hopefully they can hire their surveyor.
Well, depending on workload and what you get caught up here, I mean, if this is something that works out for both parties, there's no reason why we would share resources.
Yeah. No, absolutely. Again, our primary goal is, is one, we serve those counties. The stuff that's going on in Alson, and we do have a gentleman from planning and building services, Mr. David Norman here today as well. Just product rich. There's a large number of projects that I was involved with before I left. There were approvals over done, conditions set. I'm familiar with what power and so a lot of these things are reviewing of some documents, placing some conditions on some other things. It's really not a whole lot. There might be some crowd involved if there's requirement of tacking or planning permission, but we don't anticipate a lot of that, I would assume. Craig Young?
Gail Norwood, chief plan for Alson County. Yeah, that's exactly right. This would be a bridge. I think it wouldn't be six months really. You know, we just, we have a, we're a small department, we're a small county, small rural county. We just need an opportunity to get a recruitment done and get someone in there. I think three months is probably about what I anticipate. We have a couple other key positions that are vacant right now that need to be filled. We have a photo for an officer retired, so we're doing that recruitment. When you have a small department and you're doing, you know, two or three recruitments, it takes a, you can run it behind. And so, you know, that's the problem we're having. So hopefully they would just approve this and this will be a bridge for about three months is what we anticipate and hopefully we'll have something in place.
Again, one thing with, again, with kind of certain positions, it's not a matter of finding any applicant. They need to be qualified, they need to be, have proper qualifications and certifications. They need to be licensed. So it really does create some issues that as we all are well aware, most of this process is recent. So it's a way of bridge. Again, we don't see much issue at this point.
And my only concern is if it's not, do you believe it's not going to impact your work things?
At this point, no. I don't, I don't foresee too much. A lot of it is going to be documented review. If it becomes a problem, we, we have mechanisms to address it and with the contract, again, we can step up.
Okay.
If it is, it's in there, it can be terminated either by either that, so, and it's, it does require board approval to back out, I believe. Is there to be department of Jim's position or Lori Anderson in Alson County?
Plenipotent.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by Marshall, second by Van. Any discussion? Rule call.
Supervisors Injori?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. S5O, thank you.
Send our regards to supervisor in this. The only problem is the night. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item D, consider introduction first reading by title only of pro ordinance of the county in sections two dash three, four, five, and two dash four, four, and two dash four, five, and two dash four, six, only post county code in their entirety, and substituting new sections two dash three, four point five, two dash four, four, two dash four, five, two dash four, six regarding the public works road commissioner and the county surveyor further set May 1, 2012, at nine a.m. for the public, nine thirty a.m. for the public hearing, second reading and adoption and direct to court to publish and post notice of hearing in the second.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff went back and revisited to propose amendments after receiving comments from the board on the seventeenth of April. We have also consulted with Mr. Ackney and the planning and building department because some of the changes impacted his department. He didn't like as part of this process and he was in agreement with what he got in front of him. We are requesting that your board consider this to be an urgency ordinance, other reasons set forth on the last page of the board item, namely that in order to receive guard funds essential to the road maintenance program of the county, that the recent selection and hiring of new employees necessitated changes. Therefore, would you, would be glad to answer any questions or obviously take any comments to the board?
You go first.
Okay. I'm not sure of terminology sometime, but can we invent things right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Two forty-four, item F. I, I'm certain that this was old language, but they're not dumps any longer, they're landfills.
Yes, sir.
Do we want that transfer section? Or is that? I see that. That'd be good.
Solid waste facilities would be appropriate?
Yes. Overall, just.
Will we lay in solid waste facilities? Is that capturing the word?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the chair has been in a comment.
Possibly for clarity, it may be permitted, solid waste facilities, because we have several closed facilities within the county, but I believe that we would only be addressing the active.
But we're responding to those facilities.
But you, this is for oversight over, or are you concerned about the ones that are sitting around in the forests?
Both. So your point's taken.
Why don't you guys take it back and work on it collectively?
Okay. We can do that.
S5O, yes.
In the sense of council, yes, urgency bill, yes.
Yes. It's a date, date.
If possible, if we could work out the language today, given the urgency, that would be preferable for staffs to be able to, but it's somewhere in the decision.
How about solid waste facilities?
Assist the board of supervisors in all things pertaining to county solid waste facilities.
That's all inclusive. Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Solid waste facilities. It really is current in the way you have, the way the current law is written, those, any liabilities or any control is there already.
Right.
It's just, as you say, verify the language of something that are any, maybe a little more up to date.
Okay. All right. So staff will substitute solid waste facilities for the road jobs.
Okay. Okay. Item D is the public works department inspect buildings or just road bridges?
Two dash four, four, I mean, inspect county roads, bridges, and buildings.
Yeah, without the buildings.
Would we ever have our engineer, your engineer, look at building plans or other living projects, potential? We can look at in combination with funding, all right?
Okay, but that's, then it's possible that you, your staff would be.
Could be, it could be a public works. I've seen before, public works facilities on that standard. I mean, I mean, it'd be limited, but that's what I'm saying.
Public works can be more than roads.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Do you want me to just finish my, my reading here?
You finished, yes.
On two point four, five, or two dash four, five, I'm just curious at the end of the pay or somewhere, should we have referenced a section code number?
We could, Mr. Chairman. Speaking for staff, I think our preference was statutes change over time, so whatever the code is at any given point in time.
We revisit this over you.
Okay, good enough.
Yes, sir. That's kind of our staff.
Okay. That's just, when I was going through this, on two forty-six, the qualifications of road commissioner and county surveyor, should it say county road commissioner and county surveyor? For consistency, or does it not matter?
Yeah, well, under the, under the current staff structure, Mr. Chairman, we have a separate current surveyor from county engineer. What, the way this is put together, if there, if in the future we have one individual who is licensed to do all of those things and our staffing is organized such that that person does do all of those things, that person could hold both titles as long as they have the qualifications set forth in the proposed language. Given that we have two separate persons doing each function right now, this gives us in staffs view, flexibility. We're saying the road commissioner shall have following qualifications, whomever that person is getting the time.
But I think supervisor's comment was if you look at two dash four, five, or two dash four, point four, five, county road commissioner, as a matter of consistency, two dash four, six, we go forward and say the road commissioner. I said, say county.
County.
Oh, county. I, I, for consistency. I apologize, I'm disappointed.
Carry that to two forty-five to, after such county road.
Yeah.
So the title is not, so title, county road.
We'll, Mr. Chairman, that.
Okay. And I think the only other thing I had was on section three of two forty-six, the last part of the sentence, I don't see why that needs to be in an ordinance, starting with recent selection and hiring. I just would recommend stripping that out of an ordinance.
All right.
Okay, well, this doesn't add anything to it.
We'll strike that there.
The only other change I have is on section two dash thirty-four point five, to be consistent again, maybe rather than powering duties generally, we say duties to be performed by the department of planning and building, not the office, just for consistency sake.
How do you put that?
Just like the other one, the duties to be performed by the department of, of that building, like, like two dash four, four.
Which one is that?
Two dash thirty-four dot five. It says powers and duties generally, and then the office of planning says it shall perform.
The duties to be performed.
Right, rather than the duties to be performed by the department of planning and building.
Okay, so you want to support the supervisor in place of office?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then the duties to be performed by?
Duties to be performed by the?
The department. Show me this one. Right.
Show me this one.
You guys seem to don't read this stuff.
So we deleted the word generally and the, the initial, all one sentence.
It's all one sentence, basically the same sentence, two, four, four, except in two four, three.
For consistency.
And then my only other comment in general was that for, again, for consistency, board of supervisors should probably capitalize throughout for consistency's sake.
Okay.
And I don't really want the department of public works and department of planning to have capitals too. Probably should, so just kind of capitalization that be appropriate throughout.
All okay?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, let me, uh, changes to pleasure the board for amendments.
Well, with those amendments, I will move that we approve ordinance, whatever.
So first read.
First, first, the first read of this ordinance.
And for the record supervisor, that the court be directed to publish and post notice of the public hearing to be set on a date, set in a general?
Correct.
Thank you.
Move by Carter, seven, nine, three. Any other discussions? Rule call.
Supervisor Carter, uh, excuse me, Injori, oops. Sorry. It's Carter.
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. She wrote it twice.
That's it. Yeah.
All righty. Item D, consider approving presence of eight radios for the department.
Chairman, Jim Trisman.
Yeah, the item D, I'm sorry, had two components, the first part is first reading and the second part is setting.
We did that. It occurred. Okay, item D, approving the presence of eight radios for the department of public works from Southern Duke Communications for a total of three thousand forty-nine, forty-four to be bundled from the current budget.
Okay. We have a change in radios, actually nationwide, but it affects our county on a limited number of radios that cannot be upgraded. So what this action will do is allow us purchase through our state CMAS bids, actually at a reduced price of basically radios to replace not all of our stock, but basically things, six radios, eight, eight radios, eight radios, so, then we need to do the frequencies.
And then the sheriff has to do the same thing to start the season?
Yeah, it's all in the county. Some newer Peter stations have been placed on the sub-mental, if we don't have these upgrades for lack of limitations.
And so, move by Injori. Second item, discussion question. Rule call.
Supervisor Sinjori?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. S5O, item F, consider adopting a resolution in the Pluss County Board of Supervisors authorizing installation of stop signs at Botter Road and intersection with Green Bay Road and Carrington Avenue and authorize the chairman of the sign.
These intersections are kind of remote area of our control and they basically have sign location, but not, actually there's not, there's no sign present, but there are intersections that are problematic. So I think one's kind of skewed, the other's limited sight distance, so, but this installation makes a more safer situation.
Move by Van.
Second.
Second by Carter. Question. Rule call.
Supervisor Sinjori?
Carter?
Aye.
Van? Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And Evans?
Aye. S5O, item G, consider adopting a resolution in the Pluss County Board of Supervisors certifying the Pluss County Main Pain County Road Line A for 2011 and authorize the chair of the sign.
Final item is basically to accept seven hundred thirteen point ninety-two miles as mileage worth on the level. So it's a shame, it shouldn't produce here.
What is this word?
Still.
Cars.
Okay.
Second item. Any other discussion? Rule call.
Supervisor Injori?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Van?
Aye.
And Evans?
Ayes. S5O. Thank you, Jim. Okay. Planning and building, kind of talk by the center. Item A, this is a direction regarding the private company, this is a small personal and able to get away from my, installing billboard sign.
Yes, Chair, I talked with the tighter housing director, Alex Scott, who is, I think, for county, for the property. It'll generate approximately six thousand dollars a year at each county.
I didn't get it, of course, Steven, sorry.
It'll, it'll generate approximately six thousand dollars a year at each county and, and also some increase in property taxes.
Okay, you think the interesting part?
Chair.
The homes, the light, the lighting, that's the only thing.
Commander, if they construct those, is such that it's, uh, gentlemen, from, uh, sometimes here, we wish to have.
And so, would you come with the lighting?
Um, it's indirect on itself, but it really depends on the sign itself and the location it proposed. There would be no, you know, housing, it's too far away from the sign. Yeah. The lighting, because of different measures within our other industry, the lighting really specifically designed for that any village outside of the sign, so, so that would, yeah.
And that was one of the first things we looked at.
So the sign's going to be located, I guess your map isn't fully graphed in here.
The map is preliminary. I took an area view and the, the area where it is, there's a pop-out. I guess you can look at the, if you guys have the, um, so looking at the first exhibit I provided, you can kind of see the top-down view. There's a pop-out there and there's a question as to whether that pop-out is actually on county property or whether it's.
Have I haven't come up with Steve, the, the, the microphone there?
Yeah, of course.
And station name for the course, record.
Every morning, say the gentleman in the board, like, American, little, small, outdoor advertising.
No, maybe.
S T O T.
S T O T.
Correct. Okay. And to continue where we left off, I'm looking at exhibit A, the aerial view of the proposed sign location. So you'll see where Theater Road meets Seminus Road, there's a pop-out and it's unclear at this point whether that pop-out is partially on county property. Because when you look at the assessed platform, which is all I've been able to look at thus far, it looks like Theater Road just makes a direct left turn into Seminus Road, which means that there's a potential area there where you wouldn't even be able to tell whether or not the sign is on the migrant farm, how it's probably developed. If you go and look at the actual site, there's a large area next to that old lander, it's just, or, it's not even on the case of for the pop-out, which would, I think, be an ideal sign location. It would almost seems that it's not on the county property. And then as, as someone just talked about, the project does have a few different benefits. I think direct revenue is always a benefit and zero liability expense to the county itself. It doesn't impact the property that we discussed and we're a local company. We're not like CBS or HMR, which is a typical outdoor advertising company. We're based in Chicago, California, and we're an independent company, primarily. We have a local sales force who is on the ground. We advertise the local businesses on these signs. We have a number of signs in Pluss County and they primarily, if not all, advertise Pluss County businesses, if not maybe a neighboring companies, but local businesses nonetheless, that's kind of our forte in an independent company. So, and also we'd be able to respond to any issues quickly. You know, we're very close.
I was looking at exhibit C, under the notes. Yeah. Who was previously on the city of Williams property? What was the problem?
Well, the problem was I made a mistake in not consulting state code thoroughly enough. I was proposing because of another location, a potential lease to the city of Williams, thinking that that pop-out area was right away. You can't put an outdoor advertising sign on right away. That was my mistake. So I had to go back to the drawing board and the neighboring property, the migrant farm property, is also within what's called a gap in the bonus area on interstate freeways, so you couldn't place an outdoor advertising sign. So that's a problem, so I'm here proposing this to you guys.
And you've had conversations with the city of Williams planning department because the city believes to the road change?
Yes, extensive conversations with them about the zone change. There wouldn't need to be a zone change to, in Dustville, it's, I think. Um, there wouldn't need to be a zone change to, uh, industrial, it's, um, I think, a little more probable, because the neighboring properties are all industrial, the area's an industrial area. Um, what we would propose is that if we can, um, come to an agreement on terms of the lease, we would need to get an area surveyed on the piece of property for the lease area, and that would also be the area which we would apply for our zone change, and all expenses, of course, related to the permitting process would be borne, borne by our company, uh, as well.
And lastly, I see, uh, in the proposed agreement, on item D two, the lease rate is, uh, six thousand dollars, uh, and in D one, there's a term of ten years, uh, but I don't see, unless I'm overlooking that, any consideration for renegotiating the, uh, lease rate at any point in time.
Well, we've proposed the lease rate, basically, as a flat rate throughout the term of the lease, uh, it's a higher rate initially at the front end, than what we pay for other outdoor advertising structures in the area, and the reason we do it is because we sort of grow into the lease over time. Um, and, you know, we can disclose that as part of the negotiations, and show you exactly what we pay on other signs in the area. We start out typically at, a little bit above where we'd like to be in terms of percentage of revenue sign generation, and we grow into that rate over time. There's other options, though, there's revenue splits, and there's, uh, CPI increases over time, there's, uh, flat percentage increase over time, that would be part of the negotiation.
But just on terms, the lease rate, that's not contingent on you having a client?
No.
Okay.
That is a guaranteed payment, basically, throughout the term of lease, and that's why I thought, I chose that, it's ideal for the county to know what they're going to get. Okay, thank you.
So the City of, uh, City of Williams, is there ordinance, do they allow any more sign for five? I got two businesses in City of Williams, and I have a lot of issues with the, with the city council and all that.
They do, we're actually going to cancel per use permit for another sign location that's north of that, and we have, um, two signs currently within the City of Williams, um, neither of them are particularly new, but the ordinance hasn't changed in some time, so they can still be approved on certain zone, zone allocations. The real tough thing, um, for locations, and why this location is unique, is, uh, federal law, and how it comes up with state law in interstate freeways. This is a very unique area in that, during a gap where it's unregulated and connected with a sign.
That's good.
Yeah. It, yeah, there's not many of them left on, on.
But, but we wouldn't, I want to have a hundred signs throughout on, I find.
No, we wouldn't, I need to be that hard to, to, sort of, control.
So this is just direction, um, regarding, um, moving forward, you, uh, did you see a timing here between your, your approval of your landage change with the city, um, or?
I can kind of outline here the process I had vision, I sort of envisioned coming to terms on, uh, a lease agreement with the county, getting an area mapped out exactly where we would potentially put the sign, getting the lease totally hammered out, getting that lease approved by the board, once we have all the terms, and then once the lease is signed, then we go to the county, you actually have to have a sign lease that kind of proceeds with the state anyways, so, once we have that sign lease, go to the county, get our approvals there, and then go get our state permits, stuff it up.
Mr. Chairman, what I would propose, if we've given that information, is that we, uh, appoint a committee of two supervisors and, uh, planning, see if we still did all the money, um, to, so we can, uh, the stock, it only doesn't have to keep coming back to.
Yeah.
Board meetings, and, uh, so we negotiate the lease, and, and I think that we're, we're still gonna have some significant issues with the city going forward here, uh, but hopefully we can resolve those.
Would you want that on, uh, that, uh?
Yeah.
And you have individuals, uh, in mind?
I would be happy to serve on that, in, uh, in, in, in City of Williams.
And, and, and.
And you served the other half of City of Williams.
Apparently sucked into that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have, um, exposure, I advertise with them, to go, so I don't know if I have to be cute, abstaining.
We're just giving direction right now.
But I'm saying, in the future, since I'm staying, do you have to leave, or stop off with?
A lot of, a lot of, why don't you, back, circle back around?
I can, we supervise, we can discuss that.
Okay, given that, you've found the two suckers up here, so, uh, do with that what you will, Steve.
Good call.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion for the record creating the, uh, the, uh, sign committee?
I would, I would, uh, appoint a, a sign committee, uh, for this particular project, that would consist of supervisors, Marshall and Evans, as well as county councilman and attorney.
Second by, second by name.
He's abstaining.
Supervisors and jury?
I'm staying.
Carter, Van, Marshall.
Aye.
And Evan.
Aye. Four, O, two, one, maybe?
Yes, four, four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, item D, consider approving an agreement between the County of Pluss County Land and Building and WKD Electric for Electrical Services for Behavioral Health Department on effective April seventeenth. With terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, authorize the chair's sign.
Yes, Chair, uh, this was brought to, uh, the department by, uh, request from Behavioral Health, and the purpose of this is to, uh, provide emergency lighting to the bathrooms, uh, and other areas.
Is that an ADA issue, Steve, again?
No, this is general, uh, I mean, as well as, uh, this is general safety, uh, issues, uh.
Is there the one, when the power goes out? Yeah, come on, yes, okay.
So where do parts of light come from to, to stop it?
Actually comes out of, I'm just saying, um, capital facilities.
All right.
Really, it's important, it's when the lights go out, um, if you don't have a sun, you rush your way out of the bathroom, or.
Be dark, I'll be there.
Move by Van, second by jury, order session. Rule.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall.
Aye.
And Evan.
Aye, S five O, item C, consider approving an agreement between County of Pluss County Land and Building Department and the County Landscape for the lawn grounds maintenance and river plan subdivision, effective March twenty-second, two thousand twelve, through March thirty-one, two thousand thirteen, in a total amount not to exceed seventy-nine oh eight, with a fifteen-day rip termination clause.
Yes, Chair. The board decided, uh, uh, last year, to, to do these kind of contracts on a minor basis, so that's what we're here in, uh, here today to do, and I might add that, uh, the dollar figures same as last year, uh, there's no, no increase, and I should also add that, uh, Bottega has done, um, um, what we've asked, there have been a couple of issues down there, and, uh, and I've been down there, uh, a couple times, to note them, iron them out, and they've, they've, uh.
For the record, county council, they did do this, and, uh, even if there's a lot of, uh, second?
Second by, number discussion. Rule.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evan.
Aye, S five O, item D, consider approving an agreement between the County of Pluss County Land and Building Department and the County Landscape Board on lawn grounds maintenance at Restored Courthouse, effective April twentieth, two thousand twelve, early April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, in a total amount not to exceed eighty-eight and two, with a fifteen-day rip termination clause by either party, authorize the chair's sign, the same thing as last time.
Yes, Chair, there's been no increase in, uh, in the price, and, uh, and, uh, as the board has expressed, uh, to me, uh, they've been satisfied with the order.
Number, move, move by Marshall, second by Carter, any other discussion? Rule.
Supervisors and jury?
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall.
Aye.
And Evan.
Aye. With that, we will take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.